All right, thank you, everybody. It is a little after three. Going to go ahead and call this work session on Thursday, October 1st to order between in person. We've got Board Member Bellamy, Hildy, and myself here in person. Online, I've got Member Holloman, Donley, and Marsette. I do not see Member Mitchell yet, but we'll keep an eye out for her. We also have Dr. Bishop and several of her administrative staff here with us to answer questions. The purpose of this work session is to talk about the reopening and reentry, going back into our schools. And we all know that there was an announcement made today that there will be a delay. And so what I want to do to start this off is to turn this over to Dr. Bishop and get a little bit of the grounding and some of the background information to just kind of kick us off to this discussion. And we talked, we said, you know, not more than say 30 minutes or so, if you need that long. And then we'll go ahead and be using the rest of the time for Q and A with board and yourself and staff. And I see a member Mitchell did join us online. So I do have the Zoom open so that I can see the hands raised for those that are online. So Board Members, if you can, please use that and I'll be able to watch here in the boardroom as well. So here we go. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Bishop. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Board Members. I will start just with a little bit of background. The staff is prepared to share the work as of today and the guidance. Of course, many documents continue to be made that are at the building level because the work overlays on multi-different levels. We'll start answering. We've narrowed down just the top big questions that were answered. And so we've really focused our work around that or the top questions that are asked that we're going to answer, that we have answers for. And we want to share the work with you to give you a mind's eye of the processes. The primary one is why, why are you making this decision? And why, how do you make your decisions? And wanted to share with the Board, Jennifer Petronas is going to get kicked back in. We do make decisions based off of current research and data utilizing indicators for dynamic school decision-making and in-school decision-making by the CDC, published September 15th. Also, the American Pediatrics Association, I don't have the exact date, in August that they provided their work, and September 14th work from the World Health Organization. They, all of these documents align with each other in regard to precautionary measures, paying attention to community spread, as well as all damage need for young people to be in schools, to that there is evidence of detrimental impacts to students, mental health, behavioral health, as well as academics who are not in school. And certainly, Mark and other team members can share, we do have data on our own children who are, we're finding lots of needs out there. So without further ado, just wanted to share with Jen that we take, she's going to go ahead and pull it up, but we do take the eight indicators suggested in the matrix by the CDC so that it is not just a school decision, it's a school-wide or district-wide or rather, community-wide decision-making. A lot of the questions fall around, well, which one means more? And how do you do this? And what's that number? I don't think in the world of COVID, and this is true, the mayor himself says they don't judge off of one number. There is a multitude of indicators that lead us to decision-making. And these eight are primary ones that we track and we publish and that are transparent on our website. They're updated daily and we speak to these. And whenever we talk about the case rate, the definition of that will all be taken and found online. So these aren't adjusted. But we take objective data to really have to understand how to make a subjective decision because there isn't a playbook. And I think Dr. Zink shared that even in the state of Alaska with, do they reopen? Do they close? What are the things that we should do in the entire state? The mayor, how does he make decisions locally? We are, we are creating this as we move along, using best practices and information presented by the science and medical experts. So these are the data that we consider in deciding, can we go back to school? And if we can, the biggest things are, can we mitigate this virus to, to keep it spread from within our buildings? And so I'm going to turn it over to Jen Petronas, our Director of Nursing and Health Services. There she is.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the CDC eight indicators, this chart is posted on our ASD public page and we are updating it every day, close to around noon, whenever the state updates their numbers on the DHSS data hub. So as you can see, there are eight indicators, but three of them are identified as core indicators. And the first number is our case rate. And right now, we're in the highest category with 272, which is taking the total number of cases in 14 days, divided by our population, multiplied by 100,000. So it's a lot different than the 14-day rolling average. And then we're also looking at the percentage of positive cases within 14 days, based off the number of tests that we ran and then who all tested positive. So we're at 4.2 in that lower green risk category. And then the third indicator is the ability to mitigate using five key strategies, which includes masking, physically distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting, and the ability to contact trace. And we're in that lower category, the ability to correctly but inconsistently implement all five because we do have some, we're working through the physical distancing aspect because there will be times where our students may be three to six feet apart as opposed to the six feet apart. So that's inconsistent. And then we have those secondary indicators, and there are six of those, which is the percentage of cases from the previous seven days as opposed to these seven days. And actually, this number has changed even quite a bit since yesterday. We've actually decreased by 14%. And again, this one is the one that changes most drastically day-to-day. And that's where we're looking at our trends. And then the hospital beds, we're looking at inpatient hospital beds, both pediatric and adult beds in Anchorage, and we're 82% full. ICU beds, we're at 65%. And then the number of individuals that are hospitalized with COVID, both inpatient and ICU beds, we're at 3.1% in that green category. And then the existence of localized community outbreak as identified by our public health department, and we're in that moderate category. So we have eight indicators as opposed to one indicator that we were looking at previously. And just looking at all this data and it tells us, it gives us a good viewpoint of where we are as a community.
And Jen sharing about the jump of one number. We have to consider trends. And prior to opening, we were watching, just like any trend generally will go down, a little up, down, a little up. But the general way you want it to move is down. And you can see that on the state website from cases starting in June or July, rather. If you look from July, there is a steady decline when you look over those months since July. So we take a look at not only just a day, and that was, could have been a flaw in the prior model is, oh, we're going to hit this number and then everything's fine. We have to look at trends over time. And so the present number of the 14-day case count, as well as that seven-day, let us know, where are we in relation to what's happened the last seven days to the present? So again, we'll be keeping our eye on these, looking at the trends and if we're trending in the right direction. With, that is the general, like, how do you make the decision? And we're just going to take a little bit of time to present the other questions that are asked in regard to safety, safety protocols, what do you do for cleaning, as well as the instructional side of all those protocols that Mark and his team are working on. And then we'll go to some HR questions, which are also in the top five. With that, I'll turn it over to, you guys can do Rochambeau to see who goes first.
President of the Kailas?
Yes.
Hey, I had a quick clarification question I wanted to ask. Do you want me to hold it to the end or ask it of Ms. Petronas now?
If you would, hold it till the end, and then we will go through all of our questions.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is Dr. Stock, Deputy Superintendent. So I'll talk a little bit about PRS and products. And then that will blend and lead right into Mr. Ross' presentation around some of the safety items. So I think it's obvious to the Board, the monumental task that's in front of us and the thousands of decisions. But I'd just like to provide a little context before the detail on that. And that is that, remember, we come out of the spring semester during the fourth quarter in, in March, and we had a major project on our hands that we had two weeks. Before that was even over, we moved into the summer extension project, and that project was running while we were finishing the other one. While that was going on, we spun up ASD Virtual, a completely new way of doing instruction the district hadn't used before, and that project was ongoing. And with that, we moved into the high-risk remote model, which we're in right now. While that's going on, we spun up in the fourth project, which is the actual reentry to face-to-face. So with that, I'll explain a little bit about the PRS. And on your screen, you kind of see, we're just, I don't want anybody to have to read these. We'll have these later. But just to show you the artifacts, so our professional project management team, which we are so fortunate to have, has been facilitating and leading us through these details. And one of the things that we've done first is just sort of build the project plan. And scrolling down to the bottom of that document that Kathy's got up on your screen, you'll see a section where it starts to talk about deliverables. And I'll just touch on a bunch of these. We have, every one of these deliverables will end up with links to multiple documents that tell how all that happens. But the deliverables that this team is putting together are everything from health plans, safety mitigation plans. A big one you see highlighted, which is a link, says the principal's guide to reentry. So we are building a site with every template, every source that principal needs for every decision. What we're doing is we're establishing the standards and criteria for everything, from drop-off for students to pickup for students, lunch, recess, hallways, nurse visits. What do you do if someone has COVID? There will be tons of these, and as you scroll down, you'll see all of these are what we are calling deliverables. And then we're putting a one-stop repository where everything a principal needs can be found in one place. What we'll do then is we'll take the main pieces of this that the public would need, we'll then transfer and roll that into the public-facing website so the, the public would be able to see the things that they need to see. So that's kind of the concept. So things that we're working on have everything to do with questions we've had about social distancing, how does it work in the classroom, the hallway, the bathroom, buses, entry to buses, exit to buses, on the bus. All of those issues, we're building to protocols for. The other document Kathy can put up is one that we, we call the reentry workbook. And this is kind of the actual document that represents where all those sites are. And so when Kathy puts that one up, you'll first see a little matrix or chart, which just has some general categories like school, transportation, nutrition, COVID guidance, and operational issues, et cetera. But then as Kathy scrolls down and you'll get to a, a section that is nothing but hyperlinks. And this would show you where everything that we have, whether it has to do with special ed issues, health issues, safety issues, guidance from the CDC, informational technology issues. All of those things are in these links. And this is where, this is the, the framework we're building for the principal's reentry workbook. And it's a work in progress, just where it's not anywhere near complete. I would guesstimate right now 30 to 50%. Some of these documents are pretty well done. They've been done for a long time, but it's a matter of getting them into one place. So that's the process that we are working through. And we'll be ready when school starts, but that's the process. With that, Mr. Roth can talk a little bit about some of those health and safety issues, which is pretty much the primary questions we get from the public in the town hall meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. So I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen. What I, what I'd like to do is, is cover, cover topics in two primary buckets. First, I'd like to go through, you know, our current COVID reporting process. I know there've been some questions about that. And tie that to, to some of the decision-making, you know, somewhat separate from the reentry decision-making. But on what are some outcomes from some of these COVID reports that we've been receiving? And then from that, I'll, I'll transition to talk about some of our, our mitigation measures, specifically equipment that, that we have procured over the last several months with a focus on the buildings and on people. And then as a part of that, also talk through some of the disinfection and sanitation materials and processes that, that we have developed. And from that, of course, at any time, please don't hesitate to ask questions. So, so to start, I'd like to give the Board just a very quick snapshot of where we are in terms of, of case management. And then I'll demonstrate the process. So this is, this is continuously changing. We are, we are receiving, I would say, on average, over the last several days, about eight to 10 reports from, from our school community on either confirmed cases of, of staff or students or potential close contacts. So what, what this happened, what happens when we receive one of these reports? It triggers an investigation by what we call our initial assessment team. And Ms. Ashley Lally, who is our Director of Security and Emergency Preparation, she, she heads that effort up, but it's a team effort. And it's also inclusive of Deb Engels, Jennifer Petronas, and then others who may be involved. So for example, if it's a secondary matter, then we will most likely involve either Marty Lang or Joe Swatney or Kirsten Johnson in this investigation. And whoever submits the report, we also involve that, that individual, those individuals. So what we have, what we have discovered initially from, from these reports, that information matters. Insofar as if we can determine based on the report that, you know, a, a student or a staff has not had any close contacts or has not been in the building, then it's, it's, it's easier for us to kind of define what, what the timeline is for that individual to be able to return to, to a school or to an activity. But what we're finding is a lot of, a lot of these investigations are very incomplete. And when there's uncertainty about the potential for, for close contacts to a confirmed case, then that tends to drive us to make decisions about specific activities. And I believe both the, the Board members are aware that we've actually put some team, teams into quarantine based on some of those uncertainties. We are finding in terms of the cases, these cases are coming from outside of the district. We have not had any examples of transmission that are occurring inside of activities, at least not yet. Behaviors that are occurring outside either amongst adults or students are causing individuals to either become positive COVID cases or they are interacting with known COVID cases. So that's just a very broad overstroke of what we are, we are seeing in terms of these cases. What I'd like to do, I'm going to just show the Board very briefly what, what the process looks like. If I can get to... So this is, this is our, our homepage. You'll note at the top center, you'll, you'll see a, a red background hot button. COVID incident report. We want to make this easy for, for folks to report either any suspected or confirmed cases. So I'll just very briefly go through this. So what, what the individual does if he or she has a suspected case or a confirmed case is they click that button. First data is, we want to know who's making the report because again, we, we will investigate in very short order once it comes in. So we need to know who's reporting and how to reach out to the person so we can get more information. Some details, date, time, location. Location would be a school and as well as an activity, if it's an activity. So it could be Eagle River High School volleyball would, would help us kind of hone in on what, what the activity is, or it could be a staff member from the school. Important to know if this, if the nurse has been notified. Many times, the nurses are very directly involved in these cases, but not always. We ask if it's a confirmed or suspected case. We ask if it's a student or staff. We're very concerned about ensuring that we don't put personal identifying information on these initial reports because of, because of the sensitivity of, of that going forward. So we ask for either initials or a student ID number. And then it won't let me go to the next page because I haven't filled in the data. The next page is a opportunity for the person reporting to provide some details. You know, what, what is this about? Again, trying to be detailed enough so we understand what's going on, but not so detailed that we have names or anything that would, would lend to release of personal identifying information. So that, that's our process. And again, this triggers our, our response. It starts in the initial assessment team. If through that process, we, we ascertain that there are bigger issues in that there's the broader potential for spread, that to a more involved team, I'll call it the response team, that develops options. You know, what are those things that we can and should do to mitigate the risk of further transmission? And in, in, you know, extreme case, if, if it looks like, as an example, the volleyball program, we will bring this to the superintendent for a decision because we understand the implications of, of, of that. So that's in a nutshell, our, our process. You've seen very briefly, you know, where we, where we stand again, that those numbers are evolving over time. So I'll pause if there are any questions on that. Okay, understood. So, so the next, the next topic is to very briefly discuss our, some of our protective equipment for buildings and for our staff, and then some of the disinfection. And you note in these tables surrounding me and all, my regrets to the people who are, who are not in the room, but I'll just very briefly talk through some of this. And I'll ask Darren Hargraves and Rob Holland, who are with me as well, if there, if there are some, some of these things that they can talk to in a much, much more technical detail. So very quickly focus on buildings. So buildings are focused on both markings, signage, and then protective equipment. Just a couple of examples of the, the floor markings. Again, these are intended to kind of influence behavior and movement in buildings. So you see, we have these in all the hallways of all of our schools where, where students and staff are, are primarily walking. We want to keep people to the right, kind of like traffic movement. So keep right, kind of in concert with the one-way sign. And then some of our signs, it's just, it's just reminders, maintain six feet. Our signage, you probably have seen a lot of it coming into buildings. That's more of a warning signage if you have symptoms that, that could be anything. We want to keep our buildings symptom-free. If you demonstrate these symptoms and it lists them out, please don't come in. So we have those, those signs. We did put out classroom, classroom sanitation and disinfection kits. Here's an example, this has gone out into every classroom. These are spray pumps, they're going to have the disinfectant, the hydrochloric acid that we are now producing. We are in the process of procuring these. It's a lot easier. So this doesn't require teachers to do any, any wipe-down per se. They just spray mist. And this will also use disinfectant that we are currently producing. We talked a lot about filters in our ventilation systems. This is an example that Darren Hargraves brought in. These are the filters that we're using inside of our heating and ventilation systems. They're, they're much more efficient and effective than these more typical filters that you've seen. A lot blow-by, they get a lot better seal, and they're compliant. Again, they're, they are intended to meet the design specifications of the HVAC systems. Either, these are other items, again, these are being distributed throughout the district and all the schools. Kind of moving over to the personal protective equipment. So again, some, some examples of what we have got. We have, we have the shields. Some of you have heard about the humanity shield. The district has procured 4,000 of these based on recommendations, requests from our teaching staff. We have these in the thousands, both adult-sized as well as pediatric, obviously much more adult. But we do have a large number of pediatric masks that can be reused. And then thousands of these disposable masks, which are distributed in all of our classrooms. We'll also have them on our buses. So any student that shows up without a, a mask, he or she will be provided with one. No questions asked, we just provide it. So that's a very quick overview of, of some of the personal protective equipment. And then lastly, I think many have seen these Plexiglas shields. These are in all of our administrative areas in all of our schools. We're continuing to make these. We have some requests to produce something like this to support our special education program. Right now, we do have in stock these, these portable lightweight partitions. In fact, this is, this one right here, this is what we buy. This is a four-piece or a fold-out-able partition for desktops. What we have found with these though, they're a little bit cumbersome, but from an elementary school perspective, we think we can cut them in half. These would be much more effective and easy and probably more efficacious on some of these tables that we have in our schools that are circular. We are currently, we, we currently have about 1,000 of these in possession. You cut them in half, we've got 2,000. We've got another 1,000 coming in and then more to fall. We, we, we think this is a very high-demand item. So that is our, a brief overview of our PPE for buildings and people. And again, when, when ready, we're happy to answer any questions.
Matt Teeford, do you want to just share, very similar to how you did last night, in regard to HR options? Again, with most of the answers that I think we desire the most that are black and white, this has proved, there's lots of different answers to just different things based on circumstance. So Matt Teeford, if you could just kind of briefly go over, I know we have a question and answer, Q and A for staff, but if you could just touch on the, the basics and then we'll be open for, to answer the Board's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the President, Matt Teeford, HR Chief. So a few, I guess, frequently asked questions, areas that I'll touch on briefly and then take questions later. One is what leave, sort of a general question, what leave is available to me if I'm concerned about returning to my classroom assignment? And as Dr. Bishop alluded, it's, begins with a "it depends" answer because each person's leave balance is going to differ based on their bargaining unit, membership, the tenure with the district in terms of how much leave they've accrued, and then what type of leave they're requesting. And if it relates to COVID exposure or quarantine related to COVID exposure of a close contact, the leave that may be available to them differs from someone who has concern about returning to an assignment. So the process would be, the leave request comes in, as always, through the leave office and is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Another area of question or concern has been around return from travel. And similarly, a case-by-case analysis, but the general premise being that if you are subject to a quarantine requirement, you may have leave available to you through the emergency COVID-19 leave provision of the federal legislation that passed in April. And that is limited though to 10 days. So the, the guidance that'll go to employees will be, understand what your leave balance is before you travel. It will be your burden to ensure that you have adequate leave to cover both the travel itself and the absence related to that, but also any quarantine requirement you may be subject to when you return. And then finally, with regard to telework agreements, one of the questions has been, if I work in a division that starts school, work in a division in a classroom assignment that starts school in-person later than elementary? So for example, a secondary division classroom teacher, will I be able to continue to access a telework agreement to continue to work virtually even though some of my elementary colleagues have returned to their classroom in-person assignments? And the answer is generally yes. Again, a case-by-case assessment. Again, a case by case assessment, beginning with supervisor, typically the principals evaluation of whether assignment can continue to be completed via telework. And then a determination as to whether operational needs and student needs can be met through through that telework agreement and assignment continuing. So I would just emphasize there is going to be an individual assessment in each of these areas as to what is available to the employee and what the circumstances require and allow. So but those are the general parameters that the leave office and the ADA specialist with regard to ADA accommodation requests, which is another area. And also the labor office will be following in in making those determinations. Happy to answer questions later. Thank you.
All right, so thank you to everybody who has, you know, presented and provided us with some information. Hopefully that's checked off some, you know, boxes for questions that board members have. I know I've got a running list and I'm sure we many of you guys do too as well. So in order to kind of make the rounds, I'd like to ask board members to please limit it to two questions. And then you can jump back in the queue again and we'll just keep going around till we're till we're good. I see Andy Holloman has his hand raised and so I will catch him. And then Deana Mitchell, I know you had asked also, so I'll have you second. And then I'll come into the boardroom and grab folks in here as well. So Andy, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to make mine really a long run on questions. I'm just kidding. One thing I was curious about on the stats or the the student reports that we have, is that strictly limited to athletics? I.e. students that we're working with right now in some capacity? We don't have anybody in classrooms that I'm aware of. So I'm assuming that 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 number is just about students that are engaged in athletics with us. Would that be true?
No, I have Tom Roth answer that, but we do have students in our schools. We have a reading tutoring program going on, so I wanted to share that with you. It's at seven schools presently and we, every day this week, we've had that. So just want to clarify for the board that that is in process and going. But Tom?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Now I'm going to ask, I think Ashley Lally is up. She she is directing or dealing with these most directly during the day. So to respond to member Holloman's question, yes, the vast majority of the student cases involve student athletes. Either either that they are confirmed or they're they're potentially close contact to either friends or family members. We did get one report yesterday from from one of the schools referenced by Dr. Bishop. But in this example, the the individual only displayed symptoms of a cold, no, no confirmed test or any indication of a potential close contact. So we treat those differently until such time that we have those conditions met. Ashley, anything to add?
Yep, that's correct. I don't have anything to add. Every student case we've had so far has been an athlete. Besides the one case that Tom just mentioned, which at this point is just a suspected positive due to symptoms. He has not received a positive result.
And I'm assuming that that you folks are following up and as they recover, we'll have a statistic for recovery added to that. That that none of these cases are recovered yet.
So I'll ask, I'll ask Jennifer to come in on that one too. Because the the true management of cases, COVID cases really resides within the Anchorage Health Department. And while we we are collaborating with with daily, primarily Ashley and Jennifer doing that. You know, through them, we'll, we'll determine what the dates are that that these individuals will be eligible to return to either activities or in the cases of of staff, when they can return to a school building. But in terms of actually following up with individuals and on that and seeing what their conditions are, et cetera, that that really resides with the health department. Jennifer, anything on that?
Um, yeah, that is correct. So the health department is doing the monitoring for any COVID cases and for the close contacts. And what we're doing as ASD is we're notifying close contacts and also verifying their return dates of any students that have gotten a letter of clearance from the health department to ensure that they're not returning to their sport or to their school before they are released from quarantine or isolation. But the monitoring is done by the health department. So they'll be the ones keeping up with when the individual recovered.
And can I count that as one question? That's a question to the the chair, the president.
Go ahead, I need one more.
Okay. Spacing has been a big question for a whole lot of people. And as part of it, I think is there's concern that the requirements kind of vague. Is there going to be a way staff can look at their room and know that they've got a hard number of the maximum number of kids that can be placed in there? At which point they'll be able to say, no one else can come in. We can't maintain a certain level of spacing this way. We're talking about three feet of spacing. And and I have to ask, is that shoulder to shoulder? Is that nose to nose? In some ways, three feet almost seems like no spacing at all. But I I guess I'm asking for the technical details on how we determine that.
Would the instruction team like to take that one?
Sure, thank you. This is Dr. Stock. There's no one standard for that. One, the thing that we talked with the medical professionals about is that it's it's six feet wherever possible. So one of the challenges that every principal has is going through the templates that we're providing them and looking for all available spaces where things can be spaced more appropriately. And so there's multipurpose rooms, there's hallways, there's other rooms. And all spaces have to be utilized to be able to do as much as we can that way, which is part of the reason for the cohort model whereby there's some extra support to each team so they can subdivide and try to spread out. And so when the when the CDC guidelines say six feet wherever possible, to the extent possible, we mitigate that with the use of our PPE with the the hand washing and the disinfectant and the cleaning and all the things that Mr. Roth has shared here is another form of mitigating that. But I mean, we have to be clear, if you've ever spent any time in an elementary school in the lower grades, it's a constant challenge and training kids want to. So it's it's going to take time and we're just going to have to keep working at it. But we've got procedures in place and I don't know if if Dan wants to touch base a little more on the the elementary side of what we'll be working with with the principals on. But absolutely, you know, the whole airplane arms and all the things that we're doing are going to be, there's hallway procedures and everything. But every space that exists, Mr. Holloman, I mean, every space we have is unique and and all the buildings are different in that design. So every principal to do some work internally to make it fit.
So Dan Barker, senior director of elementary, just to add to what Dr. Stock shared. So we will, we will look at every tool we have to mitigate that to the extent possible, getting those numbers down as low as possible, including things like moving staff in some cases around, both within a site or even in addition to a site to allow us to spread those groups out, as you referenced. We will be looking at places where because of either enrollment changes or folks who had elected the virtual option, we might have open classrooms. So we could have teachers working across spaces to monitor multiple smaller groups. We could envision working in the larger spaces that are already in our buildings that we know aren't, aren't going to be used in the way they're generally envisioned, like the MPRs or music rooms, museums, art rooms. We will go so far as to consider pulling kids out into hallways when we can find work areas that allow people to spread out more and more and more to get those numbers as small as possible. Additionally, principals will be working through with staff and for some staff, understand that this will be a little bit of a challenge for them from that perspective. But to remove all non-essential material from your classroom, elementary school teachers in particular have a have a real ingrained process. I was one myself for many years and it comes from a great place, right? All these great things I always used and I built and I brought in and I added to what was provided. So that that's something we're having to work with staff to start those conversations about those things need to come out. So we can get as many people in here safely as possible and have those things not be obstacles. And then finally, though, to to the point, the last point of your question there, Mr. Holloman, I I'm sure you're, we don't put a hard limit on the number of students who show up and enroll in a building though. So as those kids come in, we will, of course, continue to service them and find as many ways as we can to to increase that distance to be as safe as possible. Then layering on all of the mitigating factors and tools that Mr. Roth's team has already mentioned.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have board member Mitchell.
Thank you. The first question was just a clarifying question. And I don't know if Dr. Bishop wants to address it or Ms. Petronas. But in the core indicators, I'm wondering if somebody can just explain to me for the first two core indicators, why is the percent of positive tests, the second core indicator? Why is that significant? What that is, is it takes the total number of tests that people have taken and looks at what percent of those people who had some kind of symptoms or just traveled back into state or whatever to to drive them to take a test? What percentage of them were positive? Why is that important? Because it seems to me the thing that's most important is how many people are positive, not the percentage of tests.
Right, I'll take a stab at that one. So what this, all the different states are doing by recommendation from the CDC is they, they're looking at the ability to be able to even test within certain states. Because some states are not, don't have the capability to test, like Alaska. There was a recent article, actually in the New York Times, giving Alaska kudos for having such great testing capability. Actually, more than any other state, which is a good thing because the more we test, the more we find virus and we know what the community spread is like. So we really do want to encourage testing for various reasons, close contact, symptoms, even travel. Because the more we test, the more we know how much virus is in our community. So the CDC does recommend testing everyone that have symptoms and anyone that is a close contact for that reason. Because the more you test, the more you really know how much is in the community. If you don't test, like other communities within Alaska that don't have the capability, you can't really get a good grasp of how much virus is in that community because you're not testing.
So is a lower percentage?
The higher it goes, the 10% of positive test that they get, that's worse. Like you want to get as low as you can because if 50% of the people I'm testing test positive, we know that we have a problem because we're not testing enough. So those indicators where it has to be less than, that's why we're in a good category because ours is lower. Do you see how the numbers work? We can call that back up, Jen, if you'd like. Do you have an ability to do that? So you want as low as possible? Because you do not have control of that virus?
You're going down or the denominator going up, as you know, as a former math teacher. So what you all are saying is that a low number is good because it tells us the denominator is probably quite high. So we probably have a pretty accurate count of the total number of cases in our community. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yep, that's a great summary. So for example, in the last 14 days, we've done in just Anchorage alone, almost 19,000 tests. And almost 800 of them were positive. So that's a good, a good, that means we're doing a lot of testing, which is good.
Okay, thank you. I just, I I was just trying to understand, you know, it seems to me the first one is the really critical one. But thank you for explaining that. So to get back to what member Holloman was saying, I, to pursue that, you know, our our students are, this is not for Ms. Petronas anymore. Thank you so much for the for the information, well, maybe it is. So, you know, most of our students, when we get back to school, are going to be spending time in classrooms. And so to member Holloman's question about, you know, six feet is the recommendation for distance between students. And I don't think we heard an answer if it's shoulder to shoulder or nose to nose because that does make a difference. But you know, probably, I mean, we're already seeing based on anecdotal information and based on emails that we're getting, that people who are in the position to do so, people who are and people who are in higher risk situations, obviously. If we do go back to in person, many of them are having to make the hard choice to potentially keep their child at home. And there are schools where many more families are going to be able to do that. And there are schools where very few families are going to be able to do that. So to get back to the school that was brought up at our last board meeting, Fairview, you know, where they, I think we heard that they don't have a single class that has under 25 students in it at this point in time. Are there, and and my assumption is that many of those families are not in a position to keep their, you know, if in school classes start again, they will most likely take advantage of that. So those classes are less likely to to shrink in size. Do we have enough space in a school? You know, again, to remember Holloman's point is 15 kids in the average classroom, the absolute maximum that we can have and maintain any kind of social distance? And if so, do we have space? Are we looking at buildings next to the schools that might have spillover space? Are we looking at putting portables in place? How, you know, I guess just a little more intervention on. And then also along those lines, the desk shortage that was mentioned in the last meeting. I love, Mr. Roth, thank you for showing us those dividers that can be used at tables for elementary. So anyway, that's a lot of stuff.
Sure, so when you said any social distancing, yes, we are doing social distancing. Will there every time during the day be six feet? No, that isn't possible. We're layering on, similar to daycares, other schools that are in session in Anchorage right now are learning from what has been successful. Again, think about our our sports teams and things. We've had cases, kids are literally in each other's bubbles, you know. But we've been mitigating on our fields and in gyms using the procedures, the the hand washing, the hygiene, making sure that immediately we find if there's any COVID. Again, it isn't because COVID is in our community, it is coming in. So our goal is to mitigate it as much as possible. Understanding children, and I spent about two hours this summer in a class with kids. It it just takes routine, routine, routine and reminding of them. But then they, you know, knew the cues that you had. We were finding this week with our kids. They're just kids, so they they know to come in and they sit on, you know, they get on their dot, but they're excited and to tell the teacher something. So, you know, they're going to, and we just have to remind them, oh, don't forget, let's do, you know, and we just follow procedures. So the idea that I think you're asking, is it absolutely six feet or nothing? No. Are we operating with the best practices suggested? Really, yesterday or the day before, when Dr. Chandler talked about the buses, he actually confirmed one student on the bus, each seat with a mask on, I think you'll be fine. Especially the way that you are making them put stuff on their hands when they go in, sit in the back, get off and put hands. So so while it isn't, I don't think anyone is going to back off, six feet is the best. I mean, that is ab six feet or more, or even more than six feet is the best. But in working with what we can do, our goals are those three foot, at least put those desks apart. And again, it will entail taking the stuff out of the classroom. I was in a classroom on Monday and they had their desks spread apart and they were showing me what they could and couldn't do. But, you know, I saw a reading corner and I saw an extra thing where people put backpacks, you know, that was brought in and extra. And I just thought, you know, we should move that in the hallway for them. We, you know, so we just have to think through it and take it one classroom by a time is is how we were. But in understanding from our our schools in Anchorage that are already in session, as well as the daycares that are in our schools right now. They haven't had the spread, but just really utilizing the the multitude of those tools.
Thank you.
So we think we do have enough space based on what you're saying in.
Yes, we are working through the space, yes. And in fact, there was a classroom being moved into the gym, half of the gym at the time that I was because the the teacher had bigger kids, older kids. And one of them moved and didn't want to rearrange his classroom to have fewer. He wanted to keep the number of kids he had, so they're moving the big desks in the gym. So, yeah. And and we'll work through those things. Those are managing items that we're working through.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into the boardroom to member Hillby.
Thank you. Is there any possibility, you know, we've started with the reading tutoring and kind of after school hours, but I have sped parent after sped parent just beside themselves, of course, because their kids are losing all those gains that their teachers and them have worked together to make for their child. You know, so as we look at these big numbers, and I I think the metric and looking at all the. You know, so as we look at these big numbers, and I think the metric and looking at all the factors is very smart. But is there, is there any recommendation for or against getting that vulnerable pollution? Can, on October 19th, could we start, you know, getting in some sped kids? Can we get the youngest fed kids in? Like, what are those steps? Just like those, like some kids are suffering more than others and.
Absolutely. And I fear the same thing, and I want this board to know that it is, our children are suffering in Anchorage. And if we believe that we have a system that's working, we need to wake up. It is not. It is not, however, by the lack of teaching or trying or time put in by educators. We continue, the, the funny thing is, is we continue to put an enormous amount of time and energy into the system we have, where the opposite effect is actually happening. We're getting less and less outcomes, right? So it's, it's the way we are. Today, when we talked with our team, we are with this announcement. As fast as we do it, we are gearing up to expand the reading program. We actually have an innovative program to support kids. We're using partnerships to expand other innovative programs to schools, including children that have, you know, operate first in self-contained classrooms to build that out. And then really other supports needed. And, and again, we're, we're learning lots. The, the schools that have the overlay of these procedures are, are the forerunners in getting the systems together because they had to speed it up more than other schools. But Dan can, can share that. By the 19th, we wanted, let's add, let's add. And we're really targeting it by the students that are in the most need, the most vulnerable, kids that, you know, missed out on some other things. So we just, it, it is a major understanding of ours that we, we need to do more, more supports for kids.
And my second one is a little more simple, just that, could you share on that spray disinfectant? Just, you know, what is that? What is, what's being sprayed into the air? Those are the questions I kind of anticipate.
I'm going to ask Mr. Rob Holland to, to talk about the specifics of the hydrochloric acid, and he can talk to the efficacy of it.
Thank you, Tom. So hydrochloric acid is a combination of three ingredients, Anchorage tap water, salt and vinegar. And we electrolyze that. Hydrochloric acid is found in the human body. Your tears are hydrochloric acid. Many, many over-the-counter saline solutions are hydrochloric acid. In, in the concentration we use it at, it's a, it's a strong disinfectant. It produces chlorine, but not the same kind of chlorine as found in bleach. That chlorine is sodium hydride, and it's about 100 times more reactive. So this is a non-toxic product. It's not regulated. And it provides a very high-level surface disinfectant, but it's very safe and completely non-toxic around people. Was that the information you wanted?
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Member Marsette up in the queue, and then Margot, I have you next.
So one of my questions is, did any parent opt out not to send their child to the reading program?
I, I turned that over to Mark. I'm not sure. There's a waiting list. But as they opt out, we, we don't have enough space for all that want to be in it. But I'm not sure if it was offered to someone if they opted out.
This is Dan Parker again. To Dr. Bishop's point, we definitely did have families who, who chose not. Now, the details of why that might be, right? There's a lot of different components there. I, I couldn't for sure tell you that it was specifically because of safety. It might have been a family supervision or other situation that was going on for them. But again, to what Dr. Bishop just said, we, we have a greater demand at those sites than, than we have spaces and we're working to increase that. There was also the question a little, a little earlier from Member Hillby about our special education kiddos. I think it's also important to point out that we do have special education students at some, that are participating in those reading pieces as well. So, so those folks aren't all just off to the side waiting for something separate. The resource folks who are participating were eligible to participate in tutoring also.
And as a side note, I just talked to a principal that we all went out to schools and visited and helped. And, and the school that I was in, principal said, oh my gosh, the parents did exactly what they were asked. The kids actually came with masks and knew how to wear them. They didn't, you know, they thought they'd have to supply some because it wasn't a lower socioeconomic area in our community. Kids excited, they followed all the directions. So there is this massive readiness to get back to school. And he said it was a real delight because their fear was that parents would want to come into school or not follow. They just had them like, either you ride the bus or you're just dropped off at this point, but you don't come out of your car, you don't do anything, not a single problem with first graders. And so it was a really, he said it was a surprise because they were worried and had staff around to be sure that there's a separation, we just pull in the kids, but they just see ya and slam the door and come on. So it was exciting for him to say that.
They're, they're probably a little relieved. But so I hopefully this won't count as my second question, but just follow up. Are we tracking those students that didn't come in? Because those are ones that do need the extra reading through iReady or whatever we've looked at. So we, we don't want them to fall through the cracks.
We're actually tracking all students. I'm going to tell you, there's hundreds more that we can't service, probably thousands more that we're tracking, tracking. I mean, we're, we're looking at trying to service them. This isn't even a tip of an iceberg. This is maybe a, I don't know. We have more need than we're doing and, and there's, we are taking a look at students' learning lost as well as other needs that they have. Member Marsette, that's a good question. Thank you.
So my second question is, one of the things we learned when we did a, we asked some, some legal advice early on. And one of the things I know, as long as we have protocols in place and that they're followed, we have, you know, it's just a safer environment for us. So I'm wondering, have all of these protocols been documented? And when we say we will follow those as close as we can, that, that just makes me a little nervous liability-wise. And so I know we've had this discussion and I just want to, I know it's hard to write everything down as you're going, but I, I think it's important that as a school district, we do have these things documented so that they are being followed in our schools.
Yeah, I, I'll let Dan share some of the documentation at individual schools. And, and my comments were, I can ask, honestly, we ask staff, I can ask. I mean, we've had, the board has received complaints from staff who are upset at other staff. So we have marrying, wearing your mask when you enter your building. We have had staff complain to the board or complain to us, share those concerns that, wait a minute, there's staff in my building. So to the best of our ability means like, yes, they're, they're posted, the expectation, it's communicated. Do we do something when it isn't followed? Yes, that, that is, we do. So to, to that point, but I, I think that's, I think to your, your, your message, Member Marsette, is that we're just not letting those things go either. That if we have an expectation, we actually follow through with the expectation. But in regard to the written expectations and protocols, Dan, you wanted to speak to those a little bit?
Yeah, of course. Thank you. So I know that we had some documents that were prepared that I think Kathy Moffett was moving through for us. So if Kathy, if you could bring up the document that's titled Muldoon Elementary After-School Instruction Plan, we could take a look at this. And what's see here is, this was the, the really fantastic work of our PMO teams that helped design these re-entry plans for our tutoring group first. And they did some of this pilot work for us. So when she's able to pull that up, you're going to see, it, it's, it's a document that walks through every facet of having your children in the building. And, and principals and then their site-level leadership teams will go through filling this out for their site. Now, it, it has to work that way because our sites are super site-specific with sizes and patterns of arrival and whether you're a bus school and have a loop or whether you have a certain-sized lunchroom, all of these sort of things. But, but they're going to go through and determine a written-out procedure for their building that covers parent arrival and departure procedures. What are staff assignments during arrival? What are staff assignments during dismissal? What are late arrival procedures? What entry school procedures? What are exiting school procedures? What is the, what's the approval procedure or allowance for visitors? Are they allowed in or not? Can non-site-based ASD staff who are observers even documenting whether those folks should be there at that point or not? Movement within the school? What is the specific schedule for Cohort One? What is the specific schedule for Cohort Two? What are the details for how is a bathroom used with each different class? What is hallway procedure, transfer back and forth between sessions if necessary? What happens for water usage? What is the classroom environment? I, I can continue to go through that for you. We have in the neighborhood of about six pages of this plan that each site will then take and develop for what that needs to look like at their school. And, and the point there is, is to both to Member Marsette's question, have it clearly spelled out so everybody understands exactly what the goal is. And then also, of course, to help our staff and our building managers and the principals or other supervisory roles, help train staff, train students. And then, of course, support staff when they don't remember these things the first time through. We have a lot of new and re-learning here for, for these adults as well as students who've been doing things a certain way for a really long time. But keys around this are that these plans have to be individualized because of the wide variety of conditions that exist in our schools for building sizes, routines, procedures, processes. And then also because one of the things that we have learned multiple times through, through COVID and, and probably other ways as well, is that the, the greatest level of investment and ownership for these plans are when those sites are doing that with the work of the teachers and the principals. So they know them, they understand those procedures, and then will be able to have confidence as to what's in place to their own health and the health of their students. We, we know as we're going forward, we are here, we will hear from staff who say, hey, I don't know about this yet. That's again, because as we're rolling out this piece, they have to work with the folks at their staff to, at their site to create it. And, and those are, are steps we're moving through pretty quickly. So, so, so that's what it will look like as it's done. And, and we really owe a lot to the pilot reading tutoring schools who forged through this first and, and really are even right now learning lessons that will impact what we change and have the sites write into their plans for their whole school reentry.
So, so we often share this as the protocols have been standardized across the district and then they're customized to each school. So each of those procedures comes from a template with best practices. And then they have to say, okay, if you notice, they have bathrooms in their classrooms. That's pretty lucky where they, they put the kids in the classrooms that have bathrooms. Guess what? Not every school has that. So another school's bathroom procedure would look different than that one. But they, we do need to have bathroom procedures and these are the guidance for bathroom. That's what they're given. Their foundations teams that are their leadership teams then take input from their staffs. They create it, they publish it, they learn it. So that right there at the building level, it isn't, the district said this, the dis, it's like, wait a minute, this is the guidance, we're responsible for this. So I have a better, you know, I understand it, it's my school. I know that this is going to happen. And again, that's best practices from the study, an Alabama study about getting teachers back into school and what works the best for their comfort to feel safe is to include them in that building-level decision-making process. So we're trying to do that. It just takes time because teachers are teaching all day long.
Yeah. No, I know. And I, I so appreciate what you just showed me because it gives me a level, well, I have confidence, but it just gives me a sense of ease, I guess, knowing that, you know, I, I know that you guys have been working on them, but seeing them and having something in writing, I think is helpful for everyone. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And here in the boardroom, we're getting handed a copy of the drafters that we just saw. And I'm sure we can get it out by email as well to the rest of the board members online. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Bellamy.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have a couple of comments and then two questions. Sorry. But first of all, the town halls were, answered a lot of my questions. I mean, it really, every single one, I got a different series of questions answered. And seeing the project summary today, I would like, when it's done, I would like to just take a look at that. I mean, I think that's awesome because I think if I'd had that earlier, I might, probably might not have had as many questions, but who knows? This, these are unprecedented times. But my question, I have one question regarding the COVID reporting. Was there any thought given to making that anonymous? Did I hear you say we had to put a name in? Because coworkers might not be, I, I don't know. I'll just let you.
So, so thank you. That, that, I mean, that's a great question. When, when we initial, when we initially started this, you know, we, we, we did not realize that, you know, we were creating that potential where personal identification information would be included in the report. So we, we very quickly addressed that. So now as a part of this, this format, the guidance we're giving to, to individual submitting is to not include any, any names or addresses, anything that would potentially reveal the identity of an individual.
Okay, all right. Because I would think that, going back to start, a member of Marsette's question, if we, if we have the protocol, we have a policy, we have a, whatever we want to call, whatever it is, everybody should be following it, not just the kids, but our administrators, our students, staff, everybody. And I think, so that, so the second question, how have we impressed that upon the, the requirement that all of our mitigation protocols are required of everybody? I mean, you know, I mean, if, if people can show up and without a mask, I'm not saying they are, I'm hoping they're not. That, that creates a little bit of concern for me. And if, and, and the other part of that is, if, if principals, how are we going to be able to cover our principals if they should have, become symptomatic or have a, wake up and have a cold or whatever? I, I just don't know how that.
So I, I guess I'll try a little bit of, of that and then I think there are others that, that will, will. And I, I think the district member Bellamy and, and the superintendent have been very specific on the expectation. It's not an ask, the expectation that any, any staffer student who enters an ASD school building facility or a bus will be wearing a, a mask. With, with regards to the, the, the other eventualities, you described a, a school principal. So again, if, if a school principal is, is exposed and is a close contact or a school principal is in fact a confirmed case, then, then the, the principal will be required clearly to, to follow the same procedures that everybody's expected. I, I'll, I'll defer to the instruction leadership to talk to you, how, how they will address if that eventuality occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. So it's very, actually, it's very simple. It's the normal supervisory judgment process, which is there's some questions asked when we see it. And, and, and in most cases, a simple contact with an adult, we might find out they forgot their mask or we might find out they left it in their room. And so a simple conversation and it's fixed. We've had some cases where that wasn't sufficient. We've had some cases where someone refused, an employee refused to wear a mask. Then the next set of due process follows and the individual's sent home because they're endangering someone else. And so that person then doesn't return. And then eventually, if it's significant, it ends up in Mr. Teford's office and it ends up in a, in a, what you would assume is the normal HR, HR processes. But thankfully, most of our people when, when are just in a mode of learning. And we found that today, the report from our reading people were simply saying, everyone knew the rule, but then it takes time to practice it to get completely proficient and it's automatic. And so even our administrators of those little reading sites had to remind teachers, don't forget your mask. Oh, yes, got to get it going. And so they'll get there, but all of these things take time to build new muscle memory.
To add that, one of the things, you know, that just simple things, when students turn in their work to not. To add that, uh, one of the things, you know, that just simple things, when students turn in their work to not have it mixed with other new stuff, you know, like what do we, and, and student water bottles. And it's, it's really that my going into that much detail and, uh, that support. So we, that's, I mean, part of our phase in process, part of the trials out there with sports and this from volunteers who want to go back has really enabled us to, to respond and come up with, with more information. I, I want to say, and I spoke to a, a principal personally, he shared a story with me at the high school level that, um, they, this puts extra added, uh, you know, they have to really use their authority sometime. It was at a volleyball game and the person didn't want to do their mask and thought, oh, I could just come in here. I'm related to this person and, and he really, I mean, he used his relational capacity with his community, which is very high to address it. But he was like, you know, just one more layer of having to do it, but it was successful. But, um, you know, he, he had to, he used his leadership and again, skills to, to have that conversation. Uh, but, um, you know, it is taken seriously and people are removed. So then again, that would be, um, you know, actually I think he might've been called a bad name at first. And then it came, you know, down to, uh, them agreeing to disagree and then the person left. But, uh, you know, it's, it's going to happen. It's not like this is, you know, an easy thing. You can imagine in the community going into stores and this and that, it's the same. But we're just being consistent, um, having expectations and then consequences when we've kind of run out of allowances for support. You know, natural consequences occur. You don't get to come to a school then.
Yeah, uh, thank you. And I, I just don't want, um, our principals coming to school not feeling good. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the weight of the implementation is on their shoulders. And if they are ill or not feeling well, we just need to have a safety net for them to be able to function.
Absolutely, very similar.
I know the elementary schools will have like teacher in charges or whatever. I don't know, but I don't, I just want to make sure that the, what, if, 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 uh, anybody gets sick, there is a process, but it seems to be a little higher level for the principals because we, because they're the ones that's having to implement the.
Yeah, not coming to school symptom-free is for everyone. So if you have a symptom, uh, and similar to our other processes, um, we have, uh, where, where do we go to next? Uh, Dan's team is on call all the time, things like that. So that follows, uh, very similar protocols, uh, because, and honestly, staff to the point of like reporting, it, it is we staff who are going to keep other staff the most. Um, people will li- listen to their colleague before, sometimes they listen to authority. And so, uh, they have more this peer pressure, you know? I mean, that's why kids, you know, they, uh, our behaviors a lot of the time are better influenced by each other than they necessarily are by someone who sits somewhere else that doesn't see me all day.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to take an opportunity to jump in myself here real quick. One of the things that, uh, we talk about, you know, as a board, as a, as a district, is meeting the kids where they are. I think right now, more than ever, we need to talk about how we meet our families where they are. We get a tremendous amount of emails about how all of this is affecting, um, how they operate in a family unit. And I was wondering if there were any ideas or conversations that have been thought about, whether it is one or two or however many days or what the options were for some evening classroom support. You had talked about over the summer school, how that was one of the things that came out of the analysis, that that really worked. And then the, to piggyback off the back of that, um, to echo member Bellamy's comments, I really learned a lot out of those town halls and the opportunity to get in, um, and hear all of the questions and the conversation and stuff like that. Is there a possibility, I know we did this kind of as we got into school, um, but kind of a continued thing as this goes on, a town hall type of a thing for, um, for parents for campus, for Apex, for single Q, just to help, you know, any of their, you know, tech questions and stuff like that where they can benefit from the collective conversation instead of maybe just reaching out to, uh, somebody at their building or something like that. So wondering how we can, um, look at the family support aspect of it as well.
Those are great ideas and we'll, we'll take those because there's, they're certainly needed. The, the ASD virtual really has, was designed to be flexible. So it, and that's why Timet's, um, you know, message where the building hours don't define virtual teachers because they'll, sometimes they need to go later, early, whatever. The other hours though, really have been defined by the contract. Could you speak to that, uh, perhaps Matt or Mark, uh, in regard to, you know, a lot, a lot of what we'd like to see is prohibitive, um, or difficult to, to, uh, advance due to contract language. And so, um, maybe you can touch on some of those because it's because they, they are great ideas. They're, they're absolutely, when we do things in the summer, we have more flexibility because it's an add-on and people again, volunteer to do it. That's, that's how we're having success is from, uh, the additional jobs offered.
So this is, uh, Dr. Stock. I'll, I'll tackle the first part and if Matt wants to tie in with some HR issues. So, uh, currently we're spinning up a, a variety of, of additional support. So the, the reading supplement is going on now. That's going on with Great Parents Support and those six sites. And then we're spinning up now how to scale that up so that all schools can pick students who are the most at risk and pull them in. So there's that piece. In addition, um, our senior director, Tarlisha Wayne, is also online tonight if you want to ask her more questions. But her group is spinning up, uh, potential proposals to bring to us about bringing back our most needy special needs students, which was a question that was asked earlier. So that is under development right now. There are teams working on what that might look like and how that could even be a supplement. The addenda is how we're covering it now. So there isn't a contractual agreement right now because a teacher is volunteering for that and then getting paid for it in addition to their day job, if you will. But, um, in terms of other ways, there's some creative ways it could be used that are not really widespread right now. The telework agreement does allow flex schedules. So there could be some potential for a teacher teaching a different set of hours if a principal was creating to how that could be used. So there are some opportunities there. I don't know if that answered the question or if, if Matt would like to expound on that.
To the president, uh, not, not too much to, to add. I, I do appreciate you mentioned the, the telework agreement because within that is the flex schedule, um, concept. So we've, we've approached that, um, primarily through the AEA, the Educators Association, but also with other bargaining units impacted, um, to allow for those flex scheduling arrangements to occur where possible. And as with any work assignment, we look through the contractual requirements before finalizing whatever that arrangement is. And, and that would depend on which bargaining unit or units we're, we're talking about.
And also I would like to add, and I don't know if, if Dr. Knutson's online right now, if there's anything she wants to add to it, but you mentioned the parent piece and that whole section of how we support our families and parents. And I know that they've been working with IT and with, uh, with Andy Klub's team and the Teaching and Learning Department. And they're building up everything from videos and they're building all kinds of training pieces that everything from simple stuff on the health pieces like masks and wearing masks and the importance of, um, as Jen Patronis always calls it, keeping ASD symptom-free. So there's a lot of those trainings, but then there's also trainings that they were putting together on campuses.
Yeah, we'll take those back, especially to, to run, um, Zooms and Echos, uh, all throughout this for, for parents and community. And, uh, even if it's not, um, it's just parents connecting with the, the, you know, a few people getting on to the experts. I think it's a great idea. Um, and you're right, this summer, the, the response was from kids, um, the connections they had with the adults that worked with them. They didn't contact me until afternoon and they could text me, you know, to mind me. So it is again, the personal relationships always matter with teachers and students and we can find ways to build on those.
Thank you. Um, so I know everybody else has their hands up and stuff like that. I want to just real quick, Dave, uh, member Donley, do you have any questions, uh, that you would like to ask, two of them?
Not at this time, Madam President, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're just going to go back up to the top of the list and start our way back down again, knowing that it's 4:35. And so, um, might go the lightning round version to ask our question. And I know we all like to ex- expand. Um, let's do one this time. Here we go. Andy, you're up, one question.
Um, returning to, to spacing once again, and I do understand that the, as we go through the day, it's dynamic. Uh, when I go to the grocery store, I know that I'm going to be within a couple of feet of some people sometimes. It's going to happen. But I also know that generally I can be 10 or 15 feet away that, as a norm. So I'm kind of wondering if we have a hard standard somewhere that, that if we're looking at the number of kids in a room statically, if, if we have a way of measuring and saying, okay, we, we can't possibly have more than X number of kids in this room or assigned to be in this room at once. And granted, as they're moving around, that's, we're going to violate whatever spacing rule we've got. That, that I get, but I'm still looking for parents and staff to have some kind of certainty that in the normal relaxed mode, when everyone's sitting down, how far away will they be from each other?
I believe we can provide that three feet to a meter, uh, um, sitting all the time. With classes that have more kids, what we're looking for is to move them into larger spaces. And so utilizing masks, keeping distance, having routines where they're not, uh, it's just how they go up and turn their papers in. The, the less inner contact that we have that we're placing them next to each other, the better. And so we are, you, our, our ru- our, not rules, but our guidance that is out, uh, is the CDC's. Uh, what Dr. Zink shared last night is, uh, we are aiming for six feet, um, or as much as possible, uh, in certain areas to get that done. And desks and things like that, we're looking at, I mean, our, we're going in there, looking at at least that three foot, I mean, but, um, between the, the desks and the kids.
Thank you. Member Mitchell, you're up next, one question.
Or a use of a divider, like something like that. Yeah, in addition, some other tool if that can't be made.
So I guess, um, a cup, a couple of things that are related to each other. We, I know that we are not planning to check students' temperatures every day. Um, we're expecting the parents to monitor that. And I know that that is, um, there's an explicit, uh, emergency order by the municipality that says schools will do that. So I'm wondering how that jives. And related to that, if there is, I know in our frequently asked questions, we say that if there is a COVID case in a classroom, we're going to do, um, contact tracing and only let those students who we think had close contact with that, um, confirmed COVID student know. And I guess if I were a parent in that classroom, I would want to know, even if my kid wasn't deemed to have been within three feet for more than 15 minutes of that particular student, because, um, I, I think it's hard to really completely accurately being, be able to say that, particularly in, you know, elementary and middle school, maybe it's a little bit more easier in high school where kids tend to stay in their, in their seat for the class period.
I, I missed it. I, I think Dr. Bishop, what's the actual question in there?
Um, is that going to be the policy that only students that based on, you know, the teacher's memory and assessment have been deemed to be within three feet of their classmate for more than 15 minutes? Only those families are going to be informed of, um, of the fact that there's a student in the room with COVID. I, that's, that's the main question.
I'll take that one. Um, so what we've been doing for the sports teams is we're definitely notifying all individuals that we've identified as a close contact, closer than six feet from more than 15 minutes. But we've also been sending out a letter that says to the opposing team typically, or any other, um, athletes that were not identified as a close contact. In this letter, um, simply says that your child may have been exposed. They were not identified as a close contact, but here are the things that you can do, um, if you are concerned, such as getting a test, calling your healthcare provider, calling your school nurse or calling health services, just as a courtesy. Cause we are finding that the more information we give families, the more confident they feel. So we are providing, um, letters that, that say that you're not a close contact, but you may have been exposed.
You may not know the answer to this yet, but will it specifically say it was someone in that, in your child's class?
Right now it says someone, um, on, someone that's not in your child's cohort or team or classroom is what the letter says now. If it is someone in the class, then we just, um, edit the letter that says someone on your child's team. We're just editing based off the scenario, but it can essentially say anything, um, that the principal or the coach desires.
Okay, I guess I feel like that shouldn't be left to the individual principal. Again, if I, if I had a child in that classroom, I would want to know that there was another child, you know? I am not a, uh, an overly.
Member Mitchell, um, she means the letter is adjusted to the place in which it occurred.
Okay.
It's not that it's just willy-nilly.
Yeah, if it's a team, a class or cohort, they just simply change the wording around to make it match whatever the situation was. But the letters are, we are sending out letters to anyone that, um, had a, had someone on their team or class, um, that tested positive that wasn't identified as a close contact, just as a courtesy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Hildy, you're up next.
Uh, thank you. I just had a question about hand washing and maybe if you addressed it, we can skip it. But we got one email, I know, like the time of each kid takes a minute, you got 20 minutes in the class, you're going to wash your hands three times. It's an hour of hand washing a day. Is, are we doing hand sanitizer? Is it a quick wash? What, what's the, uh, what are some of the logistic considerations, I guess, behind that?
I'll let you take that for the, the good news is that the majority of classrooms do have sinks, so we can divide that up, but.
So, so just to very briefly respond to that. So every, every classroom has hand sanitizer, um, pre-positioned placed in it. So elementary school, uh, they've got four six-ounce squeezable tubes. Those will be replenished by BPOs and the intent is that the teachers would administer a dollop as kids come in. In terms of the, the timing of hand washing, I, I really would, would default to, uh, Mr., uh, Barker to address how they're working that for, for individual schools. I mean, we understand the importance of it. So, Daniel, what?
Uh, sure. So, um, uh, again, to, to the conversation, uh, most of what we have been told is that the sanitizer should be used as a backup, but not as a replacement to washing, right? So that's always your preferred. So, uh, in an elementary school classroom, as Dr. Bishop said, the, the far, far, far excessive majority of our elementary school classrooms, regardless of whether those are primary or intermediate, have a sink. And so then that would become a management tool of, of the teacher. So as you can imagine, that's a, looks a little different if you're working with sixth graders than if you're working with five-year-olds. But, uh, if that means that that starts in groups of three or in one or two at a time in preparation for either a mealtime or after, or in conjunction with, with bathroom time, um, all of those things will happen. What they will do is what they do actually even right now in a classroom, which is the automaticity and the amount of part that a group of kids have with it impacts the speed at which that process happens, right? So at the first, when we're first back, uh, teachers will certainly be giving up some of their instructional time to make sure that that's happened and it's routine and it's practiced. And like anything else, as they've done it more and more, and they understand it as an expectation that's not optional, it, it will get, it will be smoothed out. It, it will always impact time a little, but, but that's a worthwhile sacrifice for the safety option.
Um, and, um, to, to go back, I'm not sure, and I'm, I'm hoping that, um, member Mitchell, uh, could you share with me the EO in regard to taking temps? I met with the city officials yesterday, I, I am, and the mayor Berkowitz. I don't know that emergency order you're talking about. If you could pass that to us, we'll go ahead and get that question answered. Do you know which one it is?
I, you know, I'm going to have to find it. I don't have it right here in front of me. I should be able to find it in a couple of minutes.
So, i- if I might, I would ask Jennifer to, to come on, uh, to address that because that, that is a topic that we have discussed, the question, why, why not? Uh, and, and there, there is, there is, um, quite a bit of, uh, opinion on that, which I think is informed by medical science. So Jennifer, if you would talk to that briefly.
I was also looking for the emergency order that was being referenced, but the CDC doesn't recommend universal screening of temperatures or help, um, for students coming in our schools for a couple of different reasons. One is because temperature check is typically not a good indicator of COVID. And in fact, we've been doing temperature checks, um, in all of our buildings with adults all summer long. And not on one time has the temperature indicated or showed that anyone had COVID, um, at, at no point. However, um, even Dr. Zink and Dr. Olson, um, said that it's not necessarily, uh, a good use of time to do the health screenings and the temperature checks. Because kids are typically asymptomatic, they're not gonna have a fever or any of those health screenings, but it is recommended. Um, and highly encouraged that parents do their own health screening on their child because they know what the baseline is, um, for their child. And we're really just encouraging students and staff not to come to school if they're sick at all.
Thank you. Next up, Member Marset.
So, um, one of the things I I guess I'm a little concerned about is teachers, um, and I'm concerned, I mean. I'm concerned that they feel safe and and, you know, everybody has to make a choice. But my concern is when we open up school, if we don't have the teachers we need. Are we, do we have the substitutes? I don't want it to be. You know, I've heard in cases when when normal school times, when a a teacher was ill or couldn't come and then we couldn't get a sub. And then they had to mix, you know, combine classes, which I don't think that, I don't think that's an option. But I I'm just concerned about how we are looking at a possible teacher shortage, um, given that teachers will be making choices. And I I don't even know what that looks like at this point.
Thank you, Member Marset, uh, Matt T for HR Chief through the President. We have, uh, acknowledged that we need to be ready for that very thing and. Also that we won't probably know. What the numbers are in terms of staff returning on on the first in person for Student Day until that day arrives. Um. We we do have a substitute pool and have taken additional efforts to ensure we have interest within that pool. And those efforts began early in the year when we recognized we'd need to contingency plan. So we've we've reached out through survey and then individually through postcards. Uh, asking for response to ensure that those who are on the list are willing to or not willing to take assignments. We've also begun some advertising efforts in the community. Um, and our moderator at last night's time, last evening's town hall made a plug, uh, to the community who might be interested in subbing. Um, to increase our sub pool because we we do want to be ready for those, uh, assignments to be filled when the situation arises. There there is some opportunity in the way that we've scheduled and planned at the elementary level. For not not typical, uh, classroom coverages as may have occurred previously, but for. Personnel within the building to provide additional assistance, uh, in the in the way that those, uh, buildings have been structured for this year. That that may also relieve some of that burden. So we are certainly mindful of the the possibility for the need for additional substitutes and have taken a number of different efforts and will continue in those efforts. Uh, going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Member Bellamy, you're up next.
Thank you. So, um, my question really has to do with the charter schools. Um, am I wrong in thinking that they are under the ASD's plan? Or do they get to do their own reentry plan?
I can answer that.
Thank.
Uh, due to their charters being different as well, uh, the general guidelines of our plan. Uh, are presented to them about the expectations and then they are working with, uh, Daryl Vinsec and their APC boards. To see if they fall within those safety categories and then from there they would either be approved or not. So it isn't, um, one kind of size fits all, uh, simply they're just bringing plans back to us. Um, for instance, we have a school that. Uh, moves in the building for math, so you have kids that will be in their cohort, but then during math time, everybody in the whole school explodes into new classrooms. And they requested that part to be online. And so if that's online later in the day for the teachers to have their prep time, uh, they were a little bit shorter than the five hours for the reading and other instruction. The students go home, they don't serve lunch in the rooms, so the students would go home at lunch and then they would get on the math. So there's different, uh, um, they've all submitted their plans and they're in review. And, uh, I know that there is controversy in one of our schools where they don't have everybody on board. But we're looking at the primary safety features as well as really asking them to work back with their boards. Uh, to ensure that their students' needs are being met.
Okay, so the the start date and the mitigation plans will be the same.
For not necessarily because if, um, they have small groups of students that they would like to serve, such as we are in the tutoring. And they want to have small groups to be able to bring people in, I believe that, um, I would. Uh, I I would encourage their innovation to meet their students' needs. I'm just, so I I I don't think there's a yes and a no answer because I I haven't received, um. Information in regard to any kind of specialized groups that want to come in earlier. But I I don't want to say that that wouldn't be allowed simply because the rest of the district is doing certain things, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but for for now, the, you know, the the schoolwide everything, um, is is on hold in our city. Um, and and just very few deliberate actions looking at the, uh, really major, major mitigation things.
Okay, so there there is space for them to be, uh, creative.
They they can, there is space to be creative, given, um.
Safe.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I just, we would have to, uh, Daryl would bring those questions to us.
Okay.
And he actually, he takes them to Tom to review. Yeah. And it's, yeah, it's it's down to those same questions, though.
Thank you. All right, my turn. Um, so originally, a couple of weeks ago, we had, um, talked about the reentry of going back to our schools. And we had about a thirty day-ish kind of a lead time going into it. Um, and a lot of that is pulling a lot of this information together and the protocols, the project, much of what you put on the screen earlier. Um, now that we have gotten a lot of those, you know, kind of put into place and still continuing to, obviously, even despite today's announcement. And this goes off of the two week that we're gonna keep revisiting this, you know, the fifteenth and the first and stuff like that. Do we still anticipate if we see our trend going down, another thirty day window to come back to the classroom? Or could it be shortened if we see the trend going down? Could it be a two week? I mean, what's that, um, timeline of distance where, okay, the trend works, here we go, here's our date, you know?
That would be, um, that's a great question and we will have protocols and things ready. It would really be determined by the training of staff, the ability to, uh, have those trainings, turn buses around, make sure the busing routes are set. So I would get a report on on the readiness and the rerouting, uh, because we're utilizing now routes for certain smaller things. And we would have to figure out, okay, if we do that and we do this, so the logistics of it, um, I I would look to about. Two weeks, given, um, the additional training, but what we will ask for is a solid two days. Um, and we were working through this now with the parent teacher conferences and adjusting some things, having a solid two days of teachers giving. Parents work at home and we need a good, solid two days to work building principles with their teachers who are going back in their schools to just practice, practice, get all their questions, feel safe, go through all this. Absorb it one day, come back the next day, practice, practice, practice. So, uh, we. Depending on the time of the year, the ability of, you know, time to do it, uh, two to three weeks turnaround, I believe. Um, Tom Roth and Mark, would you say that would be appropriate, uh, and and those days included in that? Like, I really feel strongly that. Teachers just by themselves, not doing any other instruction, but just getting the professional development will be needed.
Thank you. All right, we've got about fifteen minutes. Let's do another quick round of just one question each. Andy, you're up.
Um, this is a community rumor that somebody asked me to follow up on, uh, and that is if we restart. Uh, are we still gonna have food distribution to students who need food but are not returning to the classroom? There's concern that the food distribution we're doing would stop, uh, for students that aren't attending.
So, uh, thank, thank you, Member Hallman, that that's a great question. So so I'll I'll start by just just make making the the comment that, um. You know, our 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 student nutrition, uh, staff is really designed for, uh, meal distribution in in school buildings. And and we've been, we were able this summer because of the availability and willingness of of our student transportation, uh, employees to. To establish both fixed distribution locations and I think it was twenty-one elementary schools when it was at its peak. And then we were able to support a number of of bus routes to deliver food, uh, across the the city in those areas that that, uh, we needed to, uh, to provide. Uh, additional services. And with regards to the bus support, it's not just bus drivers, it's also cafeteria workers. That, uh, that have that food handling, uh, uh, credential. So the what's gonna happen, uh, and and this kind of ties into the comments that Dr. Bishop made about the transition. You know, once, once we have that, um, that date to to move back into school buildings. That really is a, for us, it's a transition point. Where we have to take the employees who are currently supporting this broader distribution across the the city. And and move those employees back into their cafes and cafeterias to to get ready for distribution of food, uh, in our buildings. So to get to your immediate question, we we will, at that point, we will end what is currently a a bus distribution to some areas of our community. However, we we recognize the need, um, for for continued meal support. So i- if, you know, given this example, we go back into elementary schools, we know those are elementary or those are neighborhood schools. That we will be, uh, within that capacity, able to provide meal support to our secondary students. Uh, we'll 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 have to evaluate some of the details to do this. Uh, and and I I don't want to bore folks, but, uh, you know, the the difference with, uh, our our meal support now vice what we were able to do this summer. We we have to, we have to show that we got one student receiving one meal. Whereas, uh, over the summer, we could provide a number of meals to to students or family members. We don't have that luxury. We have to account for for all meals, uh, in accordance with with rules provided to us by, uh, USDA. So we are also planning to distribute food from our high schools and our middle schools. So students will be able to go to those sites as well to receive meals. Again, the 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 difference here is that we are not distributing, uh, by bus, but that we will be issuing meals, uh, from the school sites. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Uh, Member Mitchell, one question?
Well, I'm gonna continue with the question that I've been, um, putting in the chat box with Dr. Bishop. Um, you know, it is, I I really appreciate all of the effort that it has gone into all of this. It's the pandemic is just. It's just such a, an unfortunate thing because there are so many, um, areas in which we can't serve our children, our families. Um, and I know that logistically, you know, the the district is looking at so many different options and permutations. And and there's so many considerations into going into, that are going into everything that we're doing. Um, but I guess to follow up on the what we were chatting about, which is, is it possible? You know, sixty to seventy percent of our students need catch-up growth in some areas. So could we bring the ones that need catch-up growth in and and do something special for them all? No, that's just too big a job, but I guess I'm wondering, um. You know, just in terms of, we know there are families that won't, um, send their kids back in person right now. We know there are families who are just desperate to get their kids back in person right now. Um, I don't know if there's something we can do with our TAs where, you know, yeah, I see. You get the gist of my question, right? Thank you for for, uh, for bringing me along.
I don't know if you want to tackle that.
I mean, we are, we see the same need, we're doing the best we can. Prior to the pandemic, we've all known, we've have a a disparity in our outcome, disproportionality. We continue to work on it. Um, this time is is made it even greater and and this is just talking about the academics. There are other massive needs out there that we are not meeting and it scares us every day.
Next up in the queue, I have Member Hildy. Are you, are you good for now? Okay, all right. Um, uh, Member Marset, did you have another question? Yeah, mute.
Uh, just a comment, um, on those shields for the tables, those are great ideas, but I saw how it kind of fell down. So I don't know if there's some way, you know, I've seen even, um, with individuals at, um, are doing homeschooling or whatever. Where they have the shields attached to something that kind of holds it up and divides them on the table. But it might, um, you know, instead of having them fall down all the time, and I'm sure you guys are working through this, so it's just, it's a comment more than anything else, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Bellamy, did you have a question?
Uh, just, uh, so I'm just wondering, so are the supplies gonna be sent to the school to be distributed at the school? And so what what will each teacher get? I know they get the masks and they get the wipes and the aerosol.
So in in addition to the the materials, uh, that you described. E- each classroom, and again, it depends if it's a secondary or an elementary, uh, school, uh, but they're basically the same. So they 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 have received the the hand pump dispenser, paper towels, hand sanitizer. In in a secondary school, it's it's a pump dispenser. Uh, in the elementary schools, it's it's the squeeze.
Oh, the squeezing, okay.
And 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 the reason for that really is, you know, some kids may have this tendency to over pump stuff. And and it it's just a waste of material. Uh, they'll have, uh, nitro gloves, we we have provided a variety of sizes, most are medium or large, but we also have a small and and extra large. What am I missing? Is, are there other items, Rob? I mean, we. We were working to get the the electric dispensers. I I think that the, and then the the face shields, uh, that that we've discussed. We've also provided, um, depending on if it's an elementary school classroom, they've got fifty. Pediatric sized disposable masks. And as they consume those, the nurses will resource additional masks. If it's a secondary school, they have fifty adult sized, uh, disposable masks, again, the same system. And then all these materials that are in the classroom. We are working, uh, through through Dan and his team and then and Kirsten. It's really gonna be incumbent on the BPOs over time as these materials are consumed, that they are keeping tabs of it. And that they're replacing, uh, the materials as they're consumed in the classroom. And we're gonna continue to push from a district level, uh, to our schools to make sure that they don't run out.
And do they get their choice of mask or or shield?
As far as, we we did poll, uh, our our instructors, uh, on on what their preferences would be. So we did get that data and we we've tried to, um, to kind of manage our our numbers, uh, to to meet that demand. It seems like most people are inclined to wear what we're wearing, a face covering and and again, we've got tens of thousands of those and. Uh, that that won't be a supply issue at all. And then we've got disposable and what we think is an adequate number of the the shields. But again, if 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 we need more, we're we're certainly postured and ready to go after more to to meet what we think the demand is. And that, I think we're okay right now.
Thank you. Uh, Member Hildy remembered her question?
Well, no, I didn't, but I, it was one that I had days before and then remembered, so that's where I'm at in life right now. Um, but talking about supplies, you know, we always do these big back to school drives, supply drives and the whole community does them. And we get these giant community, you know, back to school supplies list. Um, you know, what what are, what should parents kind of be anticipating for when that does happen? Are we gonna have that same big push or is it gonna be something kind of scaled back? And 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 I just want to share, I know our community would be very happy to, um, partner, just if we communicate it with them.
Uh, sure, through the President, uh, to Member Hildy. Um, actually, the push you're talking about, uh, really, interestingly enough, comes organically from some of our folks who provide those supplies generally at the schools. Uh, they also then push that along, so it it happens in both ways. So so principals, uh, as we get closer and they're sharing that information, will start, uh, talking to families about. Trying to bring individualized things in like a pencil box type of things, things that we wouldn't be sharing if possible. Also, the the significant request for all to come with masks if they both have a preferred type of their own. And to help us, um, allow them to have something that they're gonna have had chance to practice with and are comfortable with and want to wear. So so we'll see all that come. We we also anticipate, obviously, uh, as as in any year. We, we also anticipate, obviously, as, as in any year, a fair number of things we don't ask for that come through the door. So, so we, we did have Mr. Holland on with elementary principals earlier today, talking about some of the challenges around what happens if a family sends in a hand sanitizer that doesn't meet specs and those kind of things. We are going to look at messaging for principals to, to get some of that guidance out so we don't have folks out of best intention sending something that doesn't meet a need that we have. So, so that will roll out as, as it would really in any normal year as you get closer to that point and, and families start getting that communication both from their principal and teachers. But, but the majority of that supply based information really does come from the larger community about saying you should bring all this. As ASD, what all we ever do or all we ever have done for many years is do a generic supply list that goes to all schools. And that also will be something that we have available, but it's generally the same one that we use year to year.
Thank you. Wanted to make some space for Member Donley, if you had any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, I'm, I'm fine, it's just a huge subject.
It is, thank you. All right, so we're coming up on the end of our work session time and I'm super appreciative to all of the staff that is here, whether in person or through Zoom, that has been able to, you know, just contribute to the conversation and helping the understanding. And hopefully members of the community can watch it and, you know, also, you know, get some of their answers as well. Knowing that we probably also have, you know, more, I encourage you to email them into, you know, Dr. Bishop so that they can, you know, start working on it. And whether it's a board connect or, you know, at a next meeting, we do have our regular session next Tuesday. I'm sure this will be a continued topic as it has been all summer long. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, you know, for participating and, you know, asking all the good questions and especially the lightning round, that really helped. Member Marsette, you had asked for a little bit of space here at the end of the meeting, so I'm gonna give that to you right now.
I'm gonna try to do this. So I'm just going to read the letter that I sent to President Vekailis and, and it just says, this has been a difficult, difficult decision for me. There is always so much more I want to accomplish as a school board member for our students, parents, teachers, staff and community. It was a struggle to make this dream come true being on the school board and I have loved every minute of my service. This is a difficult time to leave with the challenges that we all face, but I've learned throughout my years that no one is irreplaceable. I have made many friends while being on the school board and will miss everyone, especially going into the schools and witnessing the great things our students are doing and seeing their shiny faces. But for once in my life, I've decided to put my husband first. And my husband first and I want to be by his side in this new chapter of our lives. No one knows what lies ahead and I want to spend that time with my husband and enjoying the years we have left. I do not want to have any regrets. So my last school board meeting will be January 5th, 2021. At that time, I will officially terminate my service to the Anchorage School Board and Anchorage School District. Thank you.
I know how hard a decision that is. I think some days we all question that same decision many times. I can honestly say it has been an honor to work with you and we're going to make the most of these next few months. As a board, obviously, we have our board policies to look at and how we move forward and the timing of all of that and. Thank you, Star.
Thank you.
I want to echo that, appreciate all that you do for Children's Star. Thank you so much. So you've, you've made a, a positive imprint into ASD and our community, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, board members, it is 5 o'clock. Our next board meeting, it's our regular meeting, is coming up on Tuesday, October 6th. I look forward to seeing as many people as possible and certainly interacting with our community. Thank you again to everybody who has joined us on Zoom and YouTube and to our administrative staff here in the building and wish everybody a very good night. Thank you.
Thank you all.